Uh-oh, we don't have a flag. Um, shoot. There a flag outside? Okay, thank you. All right. A delusion to the flag of the. If we can do a roll call, please. Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Um. Am I good?
Yeah.
And Paul Ryu is absent and excused. The meeting is quorummed. Um, can get a motion for approval of the proposed agenda.
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented? Second.
This has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented. Is there any public comment to the motion? Any board comments? And we need to do a roll call vote on this one, um, just because there's monetary items attached to it. Amy Morrison? Yes. Paul Ryu is absent and excused. Eric Vanseis?
Yes.
Blossom Teal Olsen?
Yes.
And Andrew Hames?
Yes.
Motion passes. Right, so we are on the special reports, government to government. Do we have anyone tonight for that?
Yes, Dion Brady Howard is online. Go ahead, Dion.
Hello, I am here tonight to represent the Sitka Tribe of Alaska for our government to government report. Um, just a couple of things. The first meeting that I saw on your agenda that you have the approval of the land acknowledgement, and I just wanted to speak to that a little bit in that we had decided that we weren't going to just come up with one land acknowledgement because actually there really isn't such thing as just one way to do it. And so, um, we presented two the school board options so that you can choose if one of them works for you or not. One of the things that had been mentioned when we were adopting this was that there are some organizations that have gone through some pretty meaningful processes in which they actually came up with what it is that they felt that they wanted to make sure they said in their land acknowledgement. And so, that's also an option, but we wanted to make sure since it was requested that we had submitted some options from which the board could choose. And so, um, that's just a little bit of explanation about that. I'd also wanted to give you an update as not only the liaison to the school district, but also as the chair of the culture committee about just the status of, you know, coming up with a recommendation for a name for Bearinoff School when it's renamed. And just let you know that we appreciate the patience and we know that it has been, um, you know, it's been a little while, but, you know, obviously, just wanting to be cautious as far as COVID goes has definitely slowed things down. But in addition to that, just trying to make sure that we have been working through a process in which people have been able to submit input from the tribal community at large and then also ensuring that in our committee meetings that people have had a chance to speak to the different ideas that have been put forth as well as navigating the fact that through the intention of making sure that no voice is ever alienated in terms of elders in our community. At one point, the council had sort of created a fluid membership for this particular committee. And so, as a result, in the few meetings we were able to have in that sort of in-between time, after that first strain of COVID had kind of calmed down and before Delta had had its uptick in Sitka, um, we'd had different people basically at the different meetings at which we discussed this. And so, um, there were a lot of different voices that were heard throughout those meetings as well as a lot of different ideas advanced. And so, just taking the time to hear and keep track of what all the different ideas were and then trying to make sure that the different people who've been on the committee at different points during this process were able to have a say in the vote. It's, I guess, just needless to say, been a little bit complicated, but, um, everybody is doing the best they can to consider that, um, we are being inclusive and thorough. And so, we continue to appreciate the patience of the board in this matter and we just can't stress the degree to which we really appreciate that the board has come alongside the city and borough in really trying to strengthen the relationship that the board has as a government to government relationship in recognizing not only the need to consult with the tribe in issues surrounding education and native education, but also just the recognition of our tribal sovereignty in looking to the tribe to take the lead on this. And so, um, we appreciate it as you come along in your own education, understanding that it definitely is, um, it can be a very long process and that we're doing the best we can to make sure that it is a thorough process. And so, we'll continue moving forward. Where we're at right now is that I believe we did take a couple of votes. We took a second vote among the members of the cultural committee to ensure that, um, the people who had ever been on the committee had a say. And then it needs also to go to the council as a whole, which will be at, I believe, our next meeting. And so, we appreciate your patience and I'd welcome any questions or comments that anyone might have. Goodness Tish.
Thank you, Dion. Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you.
I do. Real quick, when is the? Hi, Dion, Andrew. I'm just wondering, when is the next, when is the next council meeting?
If I'm not mistaken, it should be two weeks from today because we had our action-only meeting today and it's usually on a two-week cycle. And so, I can't guarantee it's on the agenda as I'm not the one responsible for making up the agenda, but since that's about where we're at in our process, I'm guessing that that's where it's going to be. Will be on that next meeting agenda. And I can inquire to see if it's able to be put on that agenda as well.
Yeah, I was just curious. Thank you.
And please don't hesitate to reach out to me individually with any questions, if anyone has any, if you think of one later on.
Thanks so much. Any other government to government tonight? All right, um, so moving on to item six, recognition. Um, we have a recognition for Darby Osborne, if you want to go ahead and come on up. Um, and Eric was going to read a little bit, I'm sorry, Blossom was going to read a little bit about what this is about, so Blossom.
Sure. I'm going to take my mask off. The Sitka School District is pleased to recognize Darby Osborne for her selection as a youth hero through the Alaska Communications Boys and Girls Club of Alaska 2021 Summer of Heroes Program. Her advocacy for educating others about climate change has helped to bring a youth perspective to this issue. Darby joined six other youth across Alaska who are named youth heroes for their volunteer work to support our communities. We honor her tonight to spotlight her remarkable efforts, thank her for what she has done so far, and encourage her to keep using her voice to make a difference in others' lives.
Oh, yeah. Hi, everyone. Um, as you know, my name is Darby. I am a senior attending Sitka High School at the moment. So, yeah, just thank you all so much for the recognition. Um, it's very much appreciated. And the cookies as well. Oh, okay. Okay, okay, okay. Yes, so I guess my kind of entrance into community service started my sophomore year of high school when myself and a senior helped throw a climate strike at Sitka High School. I believe it was Sitka High School's first climate strike, so that was a really great opportunity and a really great way to kind of delve into all of this. And then, ever since then, I've been just looking for other ways that I can help contribute to my community and also advocate for changes that I believe are necessary. So, a lot of the work that I do deals with the environment. Um, I helped start a youth environmental club here in Sitka, so that has been really great to work with. And then I've also delved kind of into the governance side of things as well. So, I provided testimony at assembly meetings. Um, I'll probably provide testimony at these meetings in a couple of weeks or months here. And I'm also on the Climate Action Task Force, which helps advise the assembly on climate decisions. So, there's just a lot of different routes. And I also hope to inspire other young people to get involved in this as well because I think that young voices are especially important in these conversations. So, hopefully, there will be many more young people down the road who are getting recognition for their efforts as well. So, just thank you all. This is super awesome.
We all got one. We took a first. Thank you so much, Darby. Um, all right, um, moving on to the next recognition, and I'll pass this off to Superintendent Hauser. And I know he wants to do a recognition of our district office staff.
I am actually going to work that into my superintendent's report. So, uh, yeah, I'm sneaking that in to my report, so, because I've got a lot of pictures.
Persons to be heard. Persons to be heard is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board about a topic that is not on the agenda. As these are not agenda items, no board deliberation or action will occur in response. Questions for clarification may be posed by board members. The board may choose to refer items to the superintendent or designate for further action. The standard time limit for comments will be three minutes unless otherwise stated by the board president with consent of the board. A sound will indicate when time expires. All comments must be respectful and charges or complaints against specific employees are not permitted per Alaska State statute. Members of the public are referred to Board Policies 1312, 1312.1, 1312.2, and 1312.3 and associated administrative regulations, as well as the Board Bylaw 9323 for information on how to lodge complaints. Speakers are also asked to please state their full name for the record prior to speaking. Do we have any persons to be heard tonight?
Good evening, Mike Vera. Uh, I just wanted to update the board since I was not here last month. Um, that SEA, Sitka Education Association, held their elections in May and I was luckily appointed president again for one more year. Uh, Joe Montaneo was elected vice president and Jen Reed is our treasurer and Ariel Starbuck our secretary. So, um, those are the folks that will be dealing with our association this year, just for your information. Uh, we wanted to just express our, um, thanks for Mr. Hauser. We've been meeting with him almost every other week since about the sixth of July and, um, talking through the issues of returning to school and all the different concerns. And, uh, it's been a great productive meeting. We've had some good conversations about kind of building a more robust mentorship program for young teachers and we're excited about that, so, um, just a quick update from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other persons to be heard? There's nobody. Okay. All right, um, moving on to school highlights. And we will start with Mandy Summer. Did I say, yeah, Mandy, you want to start? Because I saw you earlier today.
Um, it's been a busy couple of weeks. Pacific High, and we're just wrapping up our, um, beginning of the year orientation. I talked about that, um, last month. Um, uh, we finished up map testing. Students all, um, did their map testing, so it might not be as fun for them, but we're happy to get that, um, taken care of in the beginning of the year so we can assess some student skills, um, early on. And, um, let's see, we have thirty-nine students. I think the last number I emailed you, Frank, was thirty-eight, but we got another one before, I mean, that I didn't know about. So, we've got, um, one away from our cap. And then we're really going to have to, uh, start taking a waiting list for, we just don't have enough room in the building, um, and it does make our class sizes a little bit, um, large. And so, um, that's exciting. That's a large number for us at this time of year. Um, and so, um, there's just a lot of energy and a lot of laughter and a lot of, um, great things going on in the building. Um, so we have, um, twelve freshmen this year, which in the ten years I've been at Pacific High, that's our biggest freshman class that I've experienced. And so, that's also exciting. Um, you know, I think we've always said that if we can bring students on earlier, um, then sometimes they can avoid some of the stress that they start to experience. You know, sophomore and junior year when life happens and some of them start to fall behind. Um, and so, I'm, uh, it's going to be really interesting to see over the next four years, this group of twelve students who start as freshmen, um, the trajectory that they're on. So, um, that's an exciting highlight for us. Um, rest of the numbers, we've got seven sophomores, um, ten juniors, and ten seniors as well. So, um, we are optimistic that we can get all ten of those seniors through and maybe we'll have another double-digit graduation, um, this year. That was, um, fun to have last year as well. Um, I think the highlight that I really, uh, well, I guess one more thing. Um, we start our academic classes. We're outside of orientation starting next week. Um, and we're bringing Friday Life Skills classes back this year. Um, and we had to put those on hold last year just due to COVID restrictions. We weren't bringing community members into the school as much and we weren't taking students out into the community. Um, typically, we have a Monday through Thursday, um, classroom schedule and then Fridays were our Life Skills and, um, Enrichment Day. Um, and so, so that'll be starting up, um, also next week. Um, we've got classes set up, um, with Sitka Native Education Program, with Southeast Alaska Independent Living. Um, we've got a partnership with Hames. We'll be taking students to Hames to start working on some PE credit. Um, and so, again, it just feels nice to start getting a little bit back to normal in terms of our school day and in terms of our community partnerships and getting students out into the community. Um, the highlight that I, um, really want to focus on for, um, this week, and I did mention it last month, um, is we just picked up, um, from the airport today, um, Eric Butler, um, and his colleague Hannah Broznik. Um, Eric is the founder of Talking Peace. Um, Talking Peace is a restorative justice, um, organization. And I think Chris is going to maybe work some cinema magic. Can you?
Well, I'm going to try playing this. The people online, I don't, I'm not sure about the audio in the room. I'm going to give this a try.
Give me just a minute and then I'll queue you up, Chris, if that's okay. Um, I just want to share with you a little bit about the Talking Peace organization because we're going to have them in town for three days. They're going to be working with our students and staff, um, Thursday and Friday all day here in Centennial Hall. And then Saturday, um, we're co-hosting a training with some of our community partners, um, co-hosting that with Youth Advocates of Sitka. Um, and, um, Talking Peace, um, on their website says they're in the business of creating intentional healing community spaces, um, especially for young people. And that's really what our intention is at Pacific High as well, so there's a really good crossover there. Um, and the mission of Talking Peace, um, is to engage people in talking circles and restorative conversations to create nonjudgmental and intentional spaces for people, especially youth, to unpack harm, build accountability, and find solutions. And again, this is really the work that we strive with, um, Pacific High School students and families. Um, and so, if it's okay, this trailer's only one minute and fourteen seconds long. Um, we're going to be showing this movie at the end of our community training. Um, and, uh, community members are invited to come to this piece of the training that'll start at one-thirty, uh, one-thirty to three. Um, and so, I just wanted to share a snippet of what is going to be happening at Pacific High School and then here at Centennial Hall, um, on Saturday, if that's okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't believe we're going to be able to get sound is our problem. Um.
Well, I encourage you to come from one-thirty to three.
Would you be able to email the board at least the link to this?
I can email the link. Um, this movie, um, is available. I think it's on Amazon Prime. It may be Netflix, I'm not sure. So, you can actually stream this as well. Um, yeah, and I'd be happy to email just a link to this website. That's where the trailer, um, is at also. Um, and so, if anybody, you know, it's a holiday weekend, we realize that, um, you know, so our community partners training, we're expecting it to be somewhat small, um, and intimate. Um, but if anybody is interested, um, in participating on Saturday, um, it's going to be from nine-thirty to three-thirty, um, with that movie being held right at the end. Um, so please just reach out to me and let me know if you'd like to get on the list for that to participate. Um, and then, yeah, I'd be happy to, um, email. This is, this is TalkingPeace.org, um, P-TalkingPeace, P-E-A-C-E. Um, that's where you can find the information for this. But I'd also be happy to email out the link for it, um, and encourage any of you to join us if you don't have big Labor Day weekend plans. If the weather's not great, come and join us here, um, and see a little bit about, um, some of the restorative justice work that's taking place across the country in much larger, um, environments than Pacific High. Um, but this really does speak to the work that we're doing, um, and the group of kids that we're working with. So, we're really excited, um, and feel pretty honored that they have come, um, to work with our school. So. Any questions?
Yeah, um, pertaining to the documentary, um, what grades, are all grades getting integrated into the?
Yeah, yeah, this is school-wide, so from nine till three tomorrow, um, and then nine till one-forty-five on Friday, um, minus lunchtime, of course. Um, we will be here. And it's, uh, you know, the way that they work is, um, it's a combined training for students and staff because this is about, you know, training adults and young people to work, uh, more effectively and more restoratively, um, in their environments and in sometimes in pretty challenging situations. And so, um, it's going to be interesting. This is, um, you know, we've been doing this restorative, some focused restorative practices work for the last seven-plus years at Pacific High. Um, we've had Carrie Berkowitz, um, who's out of San Francisco Unified School District, that's where she started. Um, and then we had community conferencing folks come out, um, from the Washington DC area. Um, and so, this is really kind of the next step for us, taking it to the next level just in terms of staff training, um, and work with students. Other questions?
Oh, I have another one as well. Um, um, non-appropriate. Last meeting, you discussed the transition of, I think, a shortage of AmeriCorps volunteers and with your lunch, um, preparation, has there been any change in?
Um, there has not been any change. Uh, I may become lunch lady in the mornings, uh, starting next week, uh, between Barbara Jones and I, um, our registrar slash secretary at the school. We do have, um, a parent who may be able to come in and help us out in the mornings to take care of breakfast, um, but at this point, we are still searching for an AmeriCorps service member to fill the position. Or in the very least, we're looking for someone who can, um, uh, fill that position as a substitute within the district. Um, you know, food handler's card, you know, is something that they would need to have, but we can set somebody up as a sub within the district, um, just to keep us going, um, hopefully until we find an AmeriCorps. Um, and if we don't, we just get creative, figure it out. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Sandra, you want to next?
So, um, things have gone really well with the opening of the school. It's so nice to see, um, classrooms full and attentive. And we had a staff meeting this morning and it was mentioned that teachers are so thankful to have hands raised and questions asked and, and it's not, they're not trying to zoom, you know, hit a buzzer and get someone in or whatever, but it's going very well. And, um, we're adjusting to mitigations. We're still getting students through that process, but we feel like that's going well. Our COVID testing, um, is a very popular place to be. Mr. Hauser joined us on Monday morning. Um, I was checking our numbers and we have obviously over sixty athletes that are testing every week right now. And then we also have other opt-in students. So, our line is long on Monday mornings, but they're getting us through and we're getting the hang of it. Um, and it, and it's going great. We actually took an opportunity to have a school-wide mask break yesterday. We had our first fire drill. And then the sun was out and we got to all go outside and, um, that went very well. Of course, it wasn't raining like it's about to be, but, um, that was great. And then, um, we have activities, obviously, up and running. We have volleyball hosting Thunder Mountain this weekend. Um, swimming was scheduled to go to Catch Can and we canceled that trip, um, but they are practicing. Um, I did want to mention, there was a, um, a thing on the packet that said to introduce our new staff members that are new to the district. And we do have, um, they aren't able to be with us tonight, but, um, Frederique Charbonneau is our new social studies instructor and Jared Rivera, a Sitka High alum, is one of our new special education teachers. And I don't want to neglect that we have some fantastic AmeriCorps members this year. Um, Magida Nader is our district AmeriCorps. And the reason that we didn't request additional members is because we knew we had community partners that were sharing theirs with ours. So, we have the YAS AmeriCorps member, Morgan Carlson, is with us and she's with us all day, every day. She's manning our bare room and it's been already just a tremendous thing for us to have that in the building. There's always a person available, ready and willing to help. And then we also are sharing with STA, we're sharing, um, their two AmeriCorps, Tegan Bradley and Ben Kaiser. And so, we just are very appreciative of our partners and we have the strongest group of AmeriCorps that I have seen at Sitka High and we're really thankful for that.
Thank you so much. Um. Oh, there you are. Ben, you want to come up?
My highlight is our new staff. Um, and so, uh, instead of making them come to the meeting, I thought, oh, maybe we'll just do a PowerPoint. So, we took their pictures, had them, uh, send us a little bio. So, up on the screen, that is not a new staff person, that is me. Next slide, please. Uh, this is Megan Devine. She is our seventh grade science teacher. She's from Fort Collins, Colorado. She went to Western Governors University. She has half a year of experience, so she's a first-year teacher. She's also the high school swim coach. She has lots of experience, uh, swimming. Um, and as you can see, swimming, uh, pottery and baking are her interests. This is Lucas Parsley. He is doing seventh grade social studies. He's from Nebraska. Uh, most recently, he was up in Fairbank, serving with the Army. Um, he went to University of Nebraska. He has, uh, one year of teaching experience. Uh, he loves running and biking and, uh, runs like the fifty and one-hundred mile races, like those are consecutive miles. So, I'm a little like, dude, that's crazy. And, uh, he's also coaching cross-country, which is probably not a big surprise. And, uh, he's also coaching cross-country, which is probably not a big surprise. Uh, Brock Vowell, he is our sixth grade English teacher, um, he is also teaching our newspaper and creative writing electives, he's from Colorado, um, he went to Fort Lewis College, eh, he's taught for three years in Colorado, he is coaching soccer, and he enjoys hiking, fishing, soccer, and snowboarding. This is Amanda Williams, she is from New York, but most recently from Gus Davis, where she taught for several years, she has nine years of experience in Alaska, um, hiking, fishing, the ocean, Legos and woodworking are her interests, and, uh, she is going to coach the potential junior ocean bow, so stay tuned, stay tuned for more information on that. Uh, we have two outstanding Americors, Erin Broderick and Sung Bang, and they are amazing, they jump right in, they just hustle, 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 so we got, uh, two real dandies, uh, for our AmeriCorps men, they're, they're invaluable, because we have so much stuff and so many bases to cover, and they really help out. Um, and we have two people who I'm sure everyone knows, Diana Fulton, who is our counselor, and Mr. Peterson from Keet, Mr. Peterson is now our woodshop teacher, and Diana Fulton is our counselor, so we were happy to welcome them on board, and they've, uh, they've been in Sitka for a long time, so I'm sure most folks know them. Um, one more point of, uh, one more thing that is a highlight for me, we have Colleen Carroll, who is our eighth grade language arts teacher, and she has taken over the running of the library, so the kids can still come in and check out books and all that, and so, uh, she's happy to do that, and we're happy to have her do that, um, to have that , uh, library up and running, so kids can still access all the stuff they need. Um, any questions from anybody about any of that? All right, thank you.
Uh, I'm Casey.
Well, it's, uh, great to have the kids back in the building, um, and just to have them out interacting on the playground together, uh, we had one parent mention, um, that, uh, her, her children thought some of their friends had moved, because they hadn't seen them in about a year and a half, uh, and thinking back to last year, uh, we did keep the kids, uh, so isolated in, in, in their cohorts, even on the playground at recess, that, uh, they hadn't seen friends, uh, in a long time, and so it's really neat, uh, just to see them out playing and, and being together, um, for recess time. Um, one of the highlights, uh, too, is just, uh, we're working on getting students in their routines, uh, there's little, you know, issues in, in problem-solving things that come up, uh, and I have to give our staff all the credit, uh, for just kind of stepping up, uh, helping each other, and then, uh, um, also just working through, you know, the things that come up, uh, together, and, and really helping make the first two weeks of school. Uh, it's been inspiring, uh, for me to kind of be a part of and see, um, during, uh, one of the tours, uh, since Deon is here, I'll, I'll just mention this story, uh, she was walking around and (cough) kind of giving her student, her fifth graders, a tour of the school, and, and stopping by and showing, uh, each of the classrooms of former students of hers, we have a couple, uh, teachers in the building that, uh, taught, and, uh, Roxy and I kind of started together many years ago, brought our kids by the office and, and, uh, asked them, and so, here's Mr. Demmer, what do you think's special about him, and, and her kids immediately said, well, he was one of your students.[823.82][823.82](laughing) So, uh, I'm, uh, not going to let her live that one down for a while, I think. Um, I also just wanted to mention, uh, Trudy with the bus company, uh, she is just fantastic to work with, and, uh, I imagine, you know, she's getting pulled in all kinds of different directions, uh, from us principals, uh, but she's always patient, she's, she's always willing to, uh, figure out how she can make, uh, our demands work for her, uh, and her people, and so I just wanted to really mention. Great to work with. Uh, our AmeriCorps, Jonathan, uh, Pjar, has been, uh, a great addition to our school, he's just jumped right in and, and is doing whatever has been asked of him, uh, lots of physical labor initially, uh, but we're going to get him, uh, plugged in and working with, uh, kids here, um, real soon. And then, good news on the AmeriCorps front, um, sounds like, uh, we have another one that just committed, uh, today, and so we're excited, I got to talk with her yesterday, um, and she sounded very enthusiastic, uh, I, I was sure to let her know, it's, uh, dark and rainy here for several months, are you sure you want to come, but, uh, she sounded, uh, excited to come up and, and look forward to having her join us in a couple weeks. Uh, we have done our optional COVID testing with staff and students, last week was our first week, that went fairly smooth, uh, we're hoping to, you know, get more students involved in that, uh, permissions went going out and coming back in, um, and, and that's been a good thing. And I just want to mention also, just kind of our, our last thing, uh, seeing, uh, the staff, uh, welcome students and (inaudible) staggered start, uh, Monday and (inaudible) days of schools, and just to see environment, uh, that's (inaudible) building, and how happy the kids were to come in. Awesome, and really, I guess, proud to be a part of that. But, just the AmeriCorps, anyone new to the district?
All right. There. So, I'll start by just introducing my new staff. So, we have Haley White, if you just want to stand up, she's our counselor, and I'm super excited to have her in our building. And then Bethany Fairs is our new reading teacher, but she can't be here tonight. And Kirsten Long is our new first grade teacher. And then we have Danielle McGraw, who's also teaching first. And, um, just on that note, it's so exciting to have such a strong start to our school year, kind of like Casey, we had a, um, uh, what did you call it? A staggered start, and so our kids started on three different days, and it was really nice to welcome them in and teach all of the kids the different routines and the mitigations, the masking, hand washing, sanitizing, as well as just proper spacing inside, and then when they're out on the playground, which is really hard to keep all of our kids' face. Um, and really to see the excitement of our five-year-olds who have never been in school before, um, is wonderful, and our first graders coming back, who have never seen that side of our building, they've never seen the gym, they've never seen the library, because we didn't have those things last year, so it was really exciting. Um, another thing that's been just a highlight of our school, the entire building, is having gym again, but also our Drums Alive program, I know most of you know what that is, it's our drumming program, it's fifteen, twenty minutes in addition to our, um, PE time, and it teaches them, um, social emotional skills and stuff like that, but it is exciting for the kids. And one of the teachers walked by today and said, oh my gosh, I just forgot how much I love Drums Alive. And one of our new teachers last year said, I didn't even know we did this.[1118.08][1118.08](laughing) And I said, yeah, it's, it's new to our school. Um, so then something else that I think is really exciting that'll be coming to Bear Knopf, we have, um, Ed Littlefield will be coming as an artist in residence, thanks to the Arts, um, Technology and Culture Program, we've worked with Jessica Christensen, he's going to be working with Joe and Jeff, both our music and PE teachers, um, really working on teaching simple clinkit actions to integrate clinkit language into the classrooms, into music and into PE, well, Joe does more than PE, but, um, into the classrooms, as well as to tell stories through music and play, and I think it'll be really exciting to see what comes out of that kind of, um, program with him. Do you guys have any questions? Bethany?
How long is the Artist in Residence program?
I think he's here for a week.
A week, okay.
We're kind of trying to work on that, because I know there's been some changes with COVID. Yeah, it'll be exciting. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. And thanks for coming tonight, you guys.[1193.15][1193.15](laughing) Right. Um, so, moving on to item nine, Board Member Reports and Blossom, I'll start with you.
Well, um, I'm just excited, I was excited to hear from Deon tonight about the, um, progress of the renaming of Bear Knopf Elementary, um, I just encourage, um, the community to get involved, it's a tribe if they have any concerns, as well as, um, I think we are all willing to listen to people's ideas as well, I'm excited to hear back from them. Um, and then, I myself, as a parent, um, just settling down from getting, um, three children off to school, I just want to thank all of, um, the administrators and the teachers who really made, um, the school year amazing. It was already amazing, because the kids got to go to school. And so, my children were very excited, and my daughter was, um, this is her first year in Blatchley, so, um, she was very excited, as well as my daughter Luca B. was very excited that, um, she didn't have to go to the first day of school, she loved that staggered day, so she got to witness her sister be nervous, and she got to sleep in one more day. Um, so personally, I, I'm just in awe of all of our teachers, and I cannot, um, say enough how proud I am of our district. Um, being, um, one of the tribal citizens within the city of Sitka, I also want to say, um, a thank you to the Sitka Tribe of Alaska for providing backpacks, also Central Council, Klinkanheida Indian Tribes of Alaska for providing backpacks to tribal families, um, you know, from my history of being, um, you know, a child in need, seeing those programs, um, within our community work for our families, so that, um, during these times of stressful times of trying to find childcare and work, um, it's good to see our families taken care of, so, um, that's a personal thank you, um, for those programs out there, and it's just amazing to see the progress of our, um, entities continuing to work together. Um, other than that, I've read a lot of resolutions in the past (laugh) day or two, and, um, it's good to be, good to be here.
Yeah, thanks, Lawson. Yeah, uh, not, no whole lot to report, as far as, uh, I mean, I'm still the liaison to Blatchley, although I have not been able to get in there with my work, but, uh, I also just want to reflect on, uh, what the, the principals have shared, and, uh, uh, Frank and your, your emails and things like that, uh, it's, it's really, i- it's really, really remarkable, uh, when you step away from all of the noise and stuff going on, when you see, uh, not only what our district is, is, uh, accomplishing, but what our community, um, man, with, uh, the challenges that have been going on, especially with the COVID. Uh, like I mentioned on my last board report last month, I, I hesitate to do it sometimes, but I, I actually delve into different, uh, reliable and reputable news sources, and, uh, in this last month, now that schools have been starting, uh, there's been a, may, maybe it's being, uh, talked about more, just because it's different, but, uh, uh, some of the things that are happening to school boards across the country, um, you know, and, uh, uh, just some of the behavior and things that are, are occurring in, in district staff, uh, teachers, uh, you know, I, I used to live in Oregon, and I read this morning, this morning, an area that I lived near, the superintendent was ousted, you know, because, in, uh, Adrian, Oregon, because, uh, the principal was simply following, uh, health guidelines. And so it's, it's really, i- uh, it's, it's disturbing and, uh, enlightening at the same time to read that, because you see what we're doing here, and we have our differences here, we have, uh, political and social differences, just like anywhere else, but, um, for the most part, we've been a, a mature community, and, uh, uh, we, as long as we can continue to agree to disagree, but do so respectfully, um, it, it'll work well for us. But I'm just really hearing the, the, the reports of how school's going and seeing all this stuff happening, and then you, again, you look across where some of the other areas that feel so bad for mostly the children and some of these other areas of our country, um, you know, that are having to go through these things, and it's so unnecessary. Uh, we teach children from, at least here in our district, from, for thirteen years, K through twelve, there's a grade standard for courtesy and respect, and, uh, it's ironic that, you know, they're held to a very tight standard, but, uh, the moment they graduate, they're, they're swimming in an environment of where that just kind of went out the window, and so, uh, really proud of this community and, uh, where we're going, I know that there will always be adjustments and things might come up, but we, we've got, uh, we've got a good town and some really good, uh, strong-thinking people, and we'll get through things, but it's, it's, uh, that's my report, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, uh, here, here, Eric, uh, well said on all of that. Um, I really don't have much to report as well, but of course, uh, my kids have all been thrilled to be back in school, uh, my two daughters started new schools, Blatchley and Keet, and their, um, pathways into those buildings have been smooth and amazing, so great work to everybody.
I'll just mention a couple things real quick, I was going to actually speak about the Bear Knopf Elementary renaming and where we were at in that process, and then Deon spoke about it, but just to kind of clarify from the board perspective, um, you know, I forgot to go back and look at the date, but several, several months ago, we as a board, you know, passed it on to them through a, an approved motion to give that to, um, STA, to come back to us with the name, so just wanted to remind everybody that, because people are starting to ask us where it's at and inquiring about that, um, it is with STA, there is no rush, we want them to take their time, we want it to be done right, and then as soon as they bring it back to us, then it will be up to the school board then to, you know, either approve or not approve it, or make changes, or whatever we decide to do with it, but it, at this point, it's in their hands and going through their, um, their committee and then their tribal council process, so just a reminder of that. Um, and then I just wanted to say thank you, like Eric and Andrew said, and Blossom, everyone, um, thank you to all our staff. Um, I met with Mr. Hauser, I don't, was it Tuesday, Wednesday last week, you know, a day or two after school started, and he said, yeah, there's a few, you know, a few little snafus that were going on, but everything was handled, and I, you know, I heard about some things that Mr. White took care of right away and was just on it, and, um, just, you know, really does speak to the quality of our staff and everybody in our community, so it's, it's pretty remarkable. Um, school board tends to only hear the negative things, and we, when negative things happen, we get inundated with, um, correspondence about it, and I don't think we've had one single thing, um, from the start of school and the whole process, so that is a huge kudos to everybody, and thank you for your leadership, um, so it's been great. Um, so that is all I have, and that moves us on to administrative reports, so I'll pass it on to you.
Oh, thank you very much. Uh, well, just, uh, really quickly, uh, a quick budget update, uh, again, we're still pretty early on, and so there's not much going on with the budget, a couple things, uh, we have, uh, gone through and, uh, processed our first payroll for all of our staff, so I'm sure many of them are very happy about that, and so, uh, we're, uh, we're moving forward there. Um, for Care Three, just a quick update with some of our, uh, American Rescue Plan, um, kind of process, we have submitted, um, our, uh, you know, uh, latest update for the ARP on the twenty-fourth, and so we're still waiting to get more information, but there's, you know, uh, reports that we have to go through and submit, and so we're in the process of continuing on those. And then, uh, really the last thing, just regarding the budget report, we are, um, getting ready for our, uh, you know, a- annual audit as it's coming through, and so we'll go ahead and have more information shared on that, uh, when we come back in October. Um, but that's really, um, about the only thing I have for you with the budget in regards to that, so are there any questions? All right, then I guess we'll jump right into my superintendent's report, and, um, in the future, I will have, uh, an enrollment, uh, enrollment, uh, is in the superintendent's report, uh, but I will have it pulled out in the future, so we'll talk briefly about that, so, uh, we'll go ahead and jump into my superintendent's report. Um, I want to echo, uh, some of what the, um- and jump into my superintendent's report. Um, I want to echo, uh, some of what the, um, principals have been saying. I got a chance to go through and visit a number of schoo-, actually all the schools and, uh, see them. I've, uh, stopped in. I'm trying to make eye contact with Mr. Veron over there because, there we go. I want to make sure we have the slides. We, we're coordinating. So, and I got a chance to really meet a number of the students and the families. And it's been fantastic just seeing the school start up, um, what Principal Demmer said about the, uh, teachers at, uh, Keet, but really across the district, um, just welcoming students coming in, following mitigations, and doing so in a way that is just respectful and kind and just, um, really just amazing to see. And so it's just, it's just, we have an amazing group of staff as well as students here in the Sitka School District. And just a couple of pictures to kind of celebrate some of those, uh, welcome back. And yeah, I had a chance to go around and see all the schools. I got a chance to sit in on some value circles at Pacific High School, which was a great experience to be part of and listening to the students, talking to the students, um, getting a chance to share some of, uh, what was going on in my day at the time, too. It's also very fun telling a story about my cat, but that's a different story. So, uh, all sorts of great, wonderful things taking place at our schools. Um, I also got a chance to, um, go and visit, uh, Bearinoff Elementary School for the start of kindergarten. And I have to say, if, if you, everyone has to go experience the start of kindergarten. I mean, it is just such a wonderful experience, um, getting there, helping out, got to deliver some snacks to some teachers and, and help some students. And it's just wonderful looking down the hallway, as you can see in some of those pictures, and just seeing the beautiful signs of welcome, uh, seeing the backpacks and the jackets and just the students just experiencing school for the very first time. And that excitement that they have in those, in, in that experience is just, it's something that, it's just, you can't, you can't, you can't explain it. It just makes you feel good inside. It's just such a good thing. And I loved, I did one of the pictures there, of course, of the student who's getting his stuff and getting it all ready to come into class. And then there was a great jacket there of a bunch of dinosaurs. And it's like, you know, just looking down the hall and seeing it filled with, you know, just student jackets and everything else. It's like, this is, this is what our schools are built for. They're built to have students and staff coming together, learning and exploring. And it's just, this is, this is what school is supposed to be. And so I was really excited to have that opportunity to, uh, visit there. But also talking about excitement, um, you know, really excited about the return to sports. All of our athletes and participants in extracurricular activities, like was said by, um, uh, Sandra are being tested weekly. And we offer free rapid testing now at all the schools, uh, that is happening once a week at all the schools for staff and students, optional testing. Uh, I'd also like to thank Garland Kennedy of the Sitka Sentinel for spotlighting our cross-country team here. I enjoyed reading about our runners' individual goals and their goals for the team. Um, I did talk in my last update, uh, about what we've learned about the importance of in-person school. And I really just wanted to share a couple of quotes. If you didn't get a chance to read the article, um, in Garland's article, which expressed, um, really, I think, many of the things that, you know, I talked about last time. Um, you know, looking back over the last three years, uh, Sitka High School senior Tawny Smith noted, "She had rather little normal high school experience. I'm just super thankful." I was talking to my parents the other day and I was like, wow, I've only had one normal year of high school. I'm super glad we're able to be in the school and everything. And then a year younger than, uh, Smith, junior Anna Prusian, also was happy to be back to cross country and in-person education. She said, "I'm excited for bigger classes and for the teacher to be able to focus on the class and not having to go between online and in-person. I'm happy to be back in person." And I'm hearing this across families, across students, just, just this excitement to being back in person around their friends. Yes, we're wearing masks. Yes, we have mitigations. But much of what I'm hearing, they will, they will happily do all that if they can have in-person full-day instruction and follow the mitigations. And so I wanted to highlight a couple of those, uh, great things that are going on. Um, as far as enrollment numbers, uh, as of this morning, uh, our enrollment is at one thousand one hundred and fifty. Uh, you can see the enrollment breakdown by grade level in the school on this chart. Um, the fall 2021 student count dates will actually take place September twenty seventh through October twenty second. So that's when we actually do the, uh, the state does the official count. And so, um, these are kind of early numbers, but they're good numbers, you know. So principals are going through, double checking, they're making sure that, you know, there's, all the students are, you know, these numbers are truly reflective of all the students. And if, you know, a student maybe hasn't come in yet, they call to make sure that they're, um, coming back to school. And so, but this is, I think, a good start for us. And so, um, I was pleased to see that. I too also wanted to thank, um, the Sitka School District staff. Um, and I really just want to take a moment to recognize, um, you know, some SSD staff and to really thank the principals, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, building staff and AmeriCorps members, and really everyone at the district office who worked so incredibly hard to get the school year off to a great start and to really provide the very best experience for our students and our families. Um, and I really do want to take an opportunity to recognize a few people in particular who have been working well beyond their workdays to support our families, students and staff. Um, our school district has had to assume so many new roles and tasks because of COVID. Things like contact tracing, quarantine planning, mitigations and testing. We've had to all learn about and manage new grants, order new supplies, answer lots of new questions. And we've also been short-staffed with one less clerical staff member in our district office. And Dawn, I really just want to take a moment to let you know how much we really do appreciate you having you with us. So it has been wonderful and fan- and fantastic. So thank you so much for being part of the team. Um, but I also just wanted to take a moment to recognize four really special people who have been keeping things really going during the challenging time. And I think they're in back there. So Leslie Young, Kim Sparks, Talan Ramos and, uh, Dawn Gluth. Uh, if you're here, not all of you are here, you know, please stand up. And if you're not, I know that, uh, you guys are probably watching from home. So Dawn is our acting business manager. Leslie is our food service grants accountant. Um, Talan, I think, is still at home. And, uh, she is our staff accountant and Kim is our payroll accountant. Um, but there's just, uh, the start, but that's just the start of what they've been doing for the district these, uh, last few months. I'd like to recognize Leslie, Kim, Talan and Dawn for working above and beyond and stepping up in countless ways and without ever being asked, uh, to make sure staff and families have what they need for a successful school year. So please join me in recognizing them for their continued dedication to the SSD family. I know I'm going to hear about this tomorrow because I know none of them really probably wanted to be here to be recognized because that's just the way they are. But I'm recognizing you anyways. And I, I think Leslie would be, uh, she'd probably tell me tomorrow morning, if I didn't take this opportunity, just to remind that, you know, the Sitka School District is providing free breakfast and hot lunches to all students this year. So if you have any questions about that, please call Leslie. So just want to make sure that I, I got that, uh, in there as well. So it's very important. Um, so thank you guys very much for everything, uh, that you've done. Uh, it has been a pleasure working with you these last two months and I'm really looking forward to continue to working with you. Um, I also wanted to take an opportunity, um, finally to, uh, yes, you thought you'd get away from this, didn't you? See, he had to be here. So, uh, and, and I wait till the last minute to give him the slides for a specific reason. So, but I did want to take a moment to recognize Chris Veron. So Chris, we don't need to move, no, you need to stand up, Mr. Veron. Would you please stand? So I would like to point out, Chris is our SSD Learning Support Director, but he picked many new jobs up during the pandemic. Um, and I really would like to thank Chris for all of the time and effort he's put into coordinating our testing procedures, contact tracing, reviewing and refining our mitigation protocols, communicating and coordinating with public health, and a dozen other COVID-related jobs that quite honestly are too vast to list. Um, we have a running joke, uh, when we talk to each over the weekend, which sadly is, uh, I think almost every single weekend now. And it's from, uh, the C-N Office space, if you've ever seen it. It's that time when the boss can say, um, yeah, I'm going to have to go ahead and ask you to come in on Saturday. I'm also going to need you to come in on Sunday, too. Okay? So that's kind of our running joke when we call each over the weekend. Um, but I really did just want to take this opportunity to thank Chris for his good sense of humor, his incredible work ethic, and for everything he's done to bring the staff and students back to full-day in-person school, and for all of the evenings and weekend hours he has donated to SSD over the last year and a half. So thank you very much, Chris, for everything. I also wanted to take an opportunity in my last update, I shared with you our 2021 Longevity Award honorees. Uh, SSD has a tradition of recognizing over half-time and full-time staff with longevity awards. But I learned we have a part-time teacher who has been with SSD for twenty-five years. And I'd like to recognize her tonight. So Robbie Littlefield, would you please stand? He's not here. Robbie Littlefield was supposed to be here. So I, I, because this is being recorded, hopefully she is, uh, watching. Um, Mrs. Littlefield is the Klingon language teacher for SSD. She started in nineteen ninety-four as a volunteer and has been teaching part-time since nineteen ninety-six. No curriculum was available, so she developed her own. Um, at this time, Miss Littlefield teaches at Sitka High School, Blatchley Middle School and Pacific High School. And here's what one of her principals had to say about Miss Littlefield. "Having Robbie in our school, sharing language and cultural lessons, has enriched our curriculum at Pacific High. Robbie not only knows many of our students by both their Klingon English names, she also knows their brothers and sisters, moms and dads, aunties and uncles, grandmas and grandpas, thus extending the Pacific High School family even further. Her depth of knowledge of Sitka people, her connection to the land and her unwavering dedication to passing on this wisdom to our children are noteworthy and commendable. Good enough to teach Robbie for everything that you do." So please join me in welcoming, uh, recognizing Robbie for her twenty-five years of service to SSD. So we are going to, kind of just a quick reminder, strategic planning. We're still in the process of strategic planning. Um, I wanted to remind everyone that, uh, we are looking for volunteers for our strategic planning action teams. We'll have an action team planned comprised of parents, staff, community members and students working on each of these strategies. We're looking for volunteers now. So if you are interested, please email info@sitkaschools.org. We do have a number of people that have contacted us. But we really want a, a good pool of, uh, you know, uh, parents, teachers, uh, staff, uh, and, uh, community members, uh, to take place in our action, uh, planning teams. Our first meeting is going to be on September thirteenth and we are meeting in Centennial Hall. COVID update time. So we do have a few items that I wanted to make sure that I, uh, you know, updated the, uh, board and the community on as well. So SSD current alert level is high. You can see that right here, front and center on our website. Uh, like last year, uh, the designation of our alert level comes from COVID cases in our community. We've talked about how schools don't usually drive COVID transmission in the community, but what happens in the community does affect our schools. Our alert level is also aligned with the cities, so the same alert level you see outside the fire station is the same you'll see on our school's doors. The city of Sitka is updating its COVID-nineteen alert levels to match the states. I mentioned this change in my update at the last school board meeting. As of this afternoon, the Sitka EOC has approved the new reporting model. SSD is going to be making the shift to, so there will be one consistent alert system, the state, Sitka and the Sitka School District. This is mainly a new behind-the-scenes calculation for the risk level on our SSD alert chart. We're going to see a small change to the names and I'm going to walk everyone through that as we kind of go through. First, here's the new calculation. The alert levels used, yeah, used to be based on the number of cases in fourteen days per ten thousand residents. The new alert level calculated is based on the number of reported cases, so the number of reported cases of COVID-nineteen over the past seven days. And this is per one hundred thousand residents. Because Sitka has less than ten thousand people, um, we use, or the state uses, uh, the census count of eight thousand five hundred and twenty-three. So when you're looking at the numbers, you can't forget to convert our case count for the one hundred thousand scale. But when you start talking about some of the math, it gets really confusing. And so I just tell people, look at the colors. It's, it's going to be the easiest thing you can do. Um, you know, there's a couple of ways you can calculate a little easier, but it's really just easy to look at the, look at the colors. And so, um, you'll be, uh, able to look, uh, for Sitka on the state dashboard and see our alert levels. Uh, if it's red here, uh, you'll see a red sign, like you said, outside the fire station and outside our doors. Uh, the new alert level calculation will enable comparisons with other areas in the state. So everyone is going to be using this, uh, the same formula. Uh, but it's going to change our risk levels a little bit to align up with the state. And so I want to talk about those a little bit right now. So the first change was really behind the scenes on the new seven-day calculation per hundred thousand people versus the fourteen day. Uh, the second change is the alert level names. So there are still four alert levels and we're still using the same color code system, red, orange, yellow and blue. Um, but the name changes slightly to match the state. Uh, so again, this will mean that the state, Sitka and SSD are all using the same alert levels. So our minimal level drops off. So we no longer will have a minimal level which was blue. So our minimal level drops off, low and moderate shift down, and there's a new substantial level that, that, uh, falls right underneath high. So here's that change on our quick summary chart. And really, it's exactly the same except for the changes that are noted. And you'll see those green circles around the, um, summary chart. Uh, the names, uh, that are circled, of course, because you'll see high, substantial, moderate and low, um, just like we just talked about. But masks becoming, uh, optional and low like before. So there was that shift. So with minimal gone, there will only be one level with masks optional, and that's going to be our low level like before. So low is continuing to be where those masks are optional. Um, any discussion about switching to mask optional also, I think this is important, needs to, um, you know, be, uh, brought up. And this change will only be made in consultation with public health and our local physicians and medical providers. Uh, we've really relied heavily on their guidance thus far and will continue to do so, especially for that very important decision. And so we'll continue to kind of check that. This next slide, I just wanted to kind of point out, you know, early on, last ti- time I gave my report, we talked about the, um, uh, CDC mask guidance timeline changes. And this was put together by the, uh, article in the LA Times. And this really just kind of shows the, uh, different timelines that the CDC has updated their, um, guidance for, uh, masking. And so it's really important to just keep this in mind as we consider, you know, that CDC guidance does not preclude us from planning for the future or from consulting with our local, uh, public health officials, um, uh, as we're kind of looking at, uh, what would be the best course of action based on what we're seeing in, uh, the Sitka area. Um, I'd also like to point out the CDC guidance on masking changes over time, just like ours are going to do. Uh, this list, like you said, was compiled by the, uh, LA Times, shows all of the different, uh, changes to CDC mask guidance that have taken place. Um, and so that's a thought, just kind of an important thing to kind of see. But here's where we are in Sitka right now. One of the reasons I'm excited about the city's change to a seven-day calculation is that families will be able to look at the state's COVID-nineteen dashboard, too, and see Sitka's alert level. This alert level will match the one outside the fire department and also on our school doors. Uh, right now, we're still solidly in high red. Uh, this is the same page I showed you before, but note that you can see and select for Sitka. Uh, the state, uh, the city of Sitka will also be, uh, updating that dashboard as well. Um, I've been, uh, talking about, um, how we're still solidly in our high, uh, alert level. And you can see, uh, that really on this graph, uh, that is, uh, how the state reports, uh, right now. Like I said, that, uh, city will be moving to this, uh, reporting, uh, metric as well. So using the same alert levels and calculations as the state opens up all of this new, uh, relevant data for us, as you can kind of look through. Uh, so this is the public data and you can go on the state website and find this and keep, uh, track of where we are and where our alert levels stand at this time. So this is how the seven-day calculation will be, uh, that we'll be using. And you will see that the field of red we're in right now, of course, is high. Uh, where we want to get to is the low, and that is that little bit of sliver. I don't know if you can see it, that little blue sliver down at the very bottom. Uh, so if you can squint, you can kind of see it a little bit. Um, but I've really been saying that we have, uh, a ways to go, uh, to get to our low level. But this kind of shows you kind of where we're at right now. Um, but we are, I have to say, on track. We are seeing the numbers drop and we're seeing case counts, uh, go down. And so that is a good thing. Um, and really kind of what I want to try to say is, you know, no one is saying that we need to be in masks forever, but we need them right now to help us continue going in the right direction. This is just one of those pictures you're like, hmm. So, uh, that, that picture really, that breath, and, and I really have to say, it, you can't really mince word about it. It's, it's respiratory droplets or spit. You know, that, that really is why masks are so important right now. And, um, especially right now when we're on a high level. Um, they create a barrier, so you don't, uh, share this with, um, anyone else. The American Academy of Pediatrics, an organization of nearly seventy thousand pediatricians, answers the question, "How do masks prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen?" And they really say it this way. "When worn correctly, face masks create a barrier that reduces the spray of the person's spit and respiratory droplets. These droplets play a key role in the spread of COVID-nineteen. Masking has proven to reduce the transmission of the virus." I've also been attending statewide meetings with Dr. Zink for a long time now. I attended one last week and I will share with you that there was a different tone in that meeting. I heard, and this is a quote, that it's becoming, quote, "becoming a really challenging and tenuous situation across the state." This was, um, a, a, uh, study for, uh, this was, uh, essentially, they looked at comparisons of how the spread might happen. And, and right here was a study that was shared and showed that at eleven point six days with no masks, almost everyone is infected in the classroom. If you can kind of see, uh, the pointer to the zero masking, the red dot in the upper corner is one positive case. And you can see how fast that spread happens. You can also see with forty percent masking and then also with eighty percent masking. Um, masking did make a difference. And so, um, I think it's important to kind of make sure that, you know, we continue to share this. sure that, you know, we continue to share this, uh, information, uh, as we're, uh, you know, keeping, uh, you're trying to focus on keeping our, you know, schools going and keeping everyone, uh, in school for in-person education. One other thing, uh, i- if, if that kind of modeling doesn't convince you, um, that masks are important right now, look at some of these headlines from around the nation and even closer to home. These are all from districts that started schools without masking. Um, and I'm not going to read through all of these, but there are some pretty staggering number here. Uh, Hillsborough Schools, eighty-four hundred students in, uh, COVID quarantine, four hundred twenty-eight students and staff in quarantine after first week of school in Arkansas District. This one, COVID heat, staff shortages, and a rat infestation forced closures of schools and districts. I mean, it's just, it's devastating to see the impact that this is having across our nation, and so, even, even closer to home. So, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I, I highlighted a couple of those things. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out, if you hadn't, uh, seen a study that claimed that masks, uh, raised carbon dioxide level in children, I wanted to make sure that you saw that that article was polled by the editors two weeks later because of critical flaws and numerous scientific issues, and so, um, that was something that I just wanted to make sure that, I know some people talk about that, but, uh, a lot of times that, uh, report that is cited was actually polled because they did find that there were some critical flaws, uh, in the, um, process. So, I'm going to put this slide up again, um, and I'd like everyone to take a good look at where we are, at the progress we've made, and also at that spike that happened after Fourth of July. So, we have another three-day weekend coming up, and I'm going to ask that you wear your mask this weekend, uh, wear your mask to help our schools. Uh, no one's asking you to wear your mask forever, but just for right now, so we can keep moving forward towards our goal, and that's that blue line at the bottom of the graph. Uh, we've been there before, and we're going to get there again. Um, and how well we work together as a community is how quickly we'll get there. So, I just wanted to kind of put that out there. Um, here's the front page of our website. This is as of five o'clock today, um, and as you can see, we currently have zero active cases connected to SSD buildings, and I really just wanted to say, you know, let's all work together, uh, this weekend to keep it that way. So, we've been in school for a week and a half, and we have zero cases, and so, um, I just want to take a moment to recognize that and celebrate that as well, so. Uh, the only other thing, uh, I just wanted to say, aside from wearing a mask, the other thing, uh, that we're focusing on is, this year, is our testing. So, like I said earlier, student athletes, our students, um, who participate in extracurricular activities, other students are all testing, uh, already, so, uh, really encouraging students and staff to join them. Uh, do your part to keep schools open, stay home if you're sick, uh, and test often. Uh, I talked before about the extraordinary efforts our SSD staff are making to meet the demands of this time period. Many school districts don't offer testing, and those that do often bring in outside contractors to handle it because of the logistics. If you look at LA, you look at some of the other districts, they have outside contractors that are coming in and doing that, um, but not here in Sitka. Uh, here in Sitka, uh, we have Nurse Shelley Gillespie and, um, Malina Munoz, uh, who is stepped up and handling all of our, uh, testing for the majority of, uh, our five schools. So, when you come to test, you'll see not a stranger in a gown, uh, but a friendly face and one of your neighbors who guides students through the quick and easy process of testing, and so I wanted to celebrate and recognize them for all the work that they're doing to do their part to help us keep our students, our staff, um, you know, and our schools open, so. And lastly, uh, just a couple of quick announcements. Um, we do have a new, uh, our school boards are going to be on, uh, a new, uh, SSD YouTube channel, so I wanted to let people know to check that out. You can, uh, access that from, you can just search for Sitka School District YouTube, and you'll find that. Um, a couple of, uh, other points, the state will be releasing PEAK statewide assessment data on September seventh, so families will be receiving their student scores from their schools after that date, so they usually don't like us to release that information until after they're posted on the website, but, um, in October for a board meeting, I'll have an update and go over the PEAK's assessment data. Um, I think you'll be pleased. I'll just leave it at that. Um, uh, and, uh, the only other thing I just want to say, if there are any questions about vaccines, there's just some information, uh, for, uh, having that, I've just been in the EOC meetings, they've been talking about, uh, vaccines are available. There's going to be some more information coming out about boosters, and so just, uh, wanted to make sure that you are aware of that, and that is all that I have for my announcements. There's a lot of information, but I wanted to make sure that I updated everyone, especially on those changes to the, um, alert levels, so. With that, are there any questions?
One thing, um, just to go back to the budget, or not the budget, but the enrollment, um, I just wanted to point out, we, so it was eleven fifty, I think, is what you said is where we're currently at, and our budget is based on eleven thirty-three.
Thirty-three. So, when we, when we built the budget and projected the, the enrollment numbers, the budget was built on enrollment of one thousand one hundred thirty-three students, yes. So, that's a good thing for us right now, but again, you know, we, we just, we want to, still going through, uh, having, uh, making sure principals are going through and double-checking, and it really comes down to that count, so we want to continue to encourage, um, you know, families that are out there, that's why I've talked about the Reach Homeschool program. If, if in-person schooling is not right for, you know, your family or your student right now, we have a great homeschool program, encourage, uh, families to, um, consider that as an option. That way, when it is right for them, that transition back to our in-person in our buildings is just, you know, seamless, so.
Just a side note, I, I really appreciate your, um, presentation tonight, the slideshows have really helped, and, um, thank you for your hard work. You've definitely been working hard, and it shows. Thank you.
And I just have to throw out there, they, they left, but, um, you know, we hired Mr. Hauser, and then we found out that our, or maybe we knew beforehand, but our business manager was leaving, and then our administrative assistant was leaving, and I was like, oh, crap. He's going to come in, you know, walk into this horrible situation and not have just, just the staff and the history and the, you know, people to help you, um, so I was really worried about it, but, um, they've done such a fantastic, so.
They're an amazing group, and it's just, they'd be great, yeah.
You're, you're still here, so they must have.
I'm, I'm still here, yes.
So, yeah, kudos to them. All right, any other questions? Moving on to item eleven, new business, um, and if we can get a motion for item eleven A.
I move to approve Klinkit Land Acknowledgement Number... Where are we supposed to pick the number? Is that part of?
So, just to start the motion and start the conversation, if you can choose one, two, or three, and making your motion, but, you know, we, obviously, um, all be changed.
I turned it off. I move to approve, uh, Klinkit Land Acknowledgement Number One as presented.
Second.
Right, so it's been moved and seconded to approve Klinkit Land Acknowledgement Number One as presented. Is there any public comment to the motion? All right, board comments, questions?
So, in hearing, um, Ms. Deon Brady Howard's, um, report tonight, um, first of all, I'm really thankful for the hard work that, um, has been put into, um, this ask, um, for the Cultural Committee, um, and all the time that they, um, spent coming up with these suggestions. Um, with what, um, was heard tonight from Ms. Deon Brady Howard's report, um, I'd like to acknowledge her, um, her discussion or her, um, reminder that while these were presented to the board, um, you know, they're kind of just suggestions, and maybe, um, we should, um, still come up with our own, um, you know. I think with the, um, with the subject and us all being visitors on Klinkit Ani, um, as a board, I think we've, um, rightfully so, um, asked the tribe for their input, um, and with that input, um, I still want to, um, adhere to their suggestions, and that being, um, these are great, um, suggestions, but, um, as the tribe stated, um, you know, each entity within this, um, city has come up with their own, so, um, with that being said, we've, we have these three suggestions, and I think these are great, um, jumping off point, and we could definitely, um, discuss whether or not we just want to, well, bait and pick a, a, a suggestion or, um, take the words of, um, Ms. Deon Brady Howard to heart and come up with our own.
Uh, yeah, I, I really appreciate, uh, the Cultural Resource Committee taking the time on this and, uh, giving us some options to choose from, and, um, I think they're all, they're all good, good candidates for becoming a permanent part of the meeting process. Um, I, you know, in looking through, just my opinion, I, I do like the first one. I think it's, uh, I like what it says, without getting too detailed or, um, so, yeah, but I do, I do recognize what, what Blossom is saying, but if we were to say, okay, we're going to take these and then we're going to use this as a jumping off point to kind of draft our own, maybe mix and match, or, you know, how we want to say, um, I wonder what that process would look like, and if it would, if it would, you know, be other committee meetings or, um, what? I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that. And I would say that, um, I'm not super in favor of doing it that way. Um, I think we should take one of these and, um, we can discuss what's here, uh, because I, I mean, I do think we, we asked them to come up with something, and so I, I'd like to take what they gave us and go from that direction.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that, uh, you know, we've, we've done outreach and built partnerships, and, uh, part, part of the way to, uh, help those grow and become strong, uh, is, you know, trusting in each other's work, and, uh, so I, I, uh, you know, looking, I, I read through very carefully the three off, three suggestions. Um, I like to write stuff, you obviously know I like to talk, um, but I, I would suspect that, um, despite our best efforts, not saying we couldn't do it, uh, there may be a hiccup or a glitch here or there that, um, you know, just, just, uh, you kind of put things in, you allow people and entities that, uh, to work in areas of expertise, you know, it's kind of like what we've done with our mitigations for COVID, you know, we, we trust the science and, um, we, we trust the work of, uh, of our, of our tribal, tribal members and whatnot, so. I, on a personal note, I, um, thinking of it from a school standpoint, education, um, I liked number two. I just, uh, part of it rang, uh, for me, just, it, it addresses the, the Klinkit elders, uh, but I was trying to think when, uh, when a, uh, land acknowledgement is read, um, if whatever age group is listening to it, can, you know, can they immediately re, not say relate, but, uh, I, I think of, uh, irregardless of a person's culture, the elders are the, the, the gatekeepers of, of history and knowledge, and, uh, so I, that one, uh, stood out for me, but I, I, I don't have any objections with, uh, with number one either there.
I, I have, um, a little bit more to say. I, I hear all of you guys tonight, and I definitely, um, stand next, next to you guys. I do agree by, uh, with everything that was said tonight. Um, but along the lines of what has been said tonight about trusting the science and, and also, um, working on the partnerships that we do have within, um, our school district, um, I do have to say, um, I'm all for picking one of these suggestions, but also reassuring, um, the Cultural Resource Committee that, um, what they have suggested and what will be said, uh, undoubtedly, you know, will come from our hearts and it will be sincere, but also just to note that part of partnership is listening. So, um, with that report tonight, um, I did want to touch base on what, um, Ms. Deon Brady Howard actually said, and, um, just take heart. I think this is a great, um, start, and I think in years to come, um, we could have a, um, full discussion, I think, um, on this matter and develop, um, maybe something of our own, um, as suggested, um, in years to come. Thanks.
I guess my thoughts are kind of along the same lines, I think, maybe as Andrew. Um, you know, I appreciate them providing us with these different options. I personally am leaning toward number one. Um, I think just because it does specifically this, you know, acknowledge the school board, or I even think we could maybe change it to the Sitka School District, um, but, and then it, it specifies our schools, um, you know, and I, I like that. I like the, the fact that we are, um, making it specific to the school district, so, um, I do, I do like that one, and, um, we can talk about this after we do or don't approve one of these, but, you know, kind of what the usage would be, but I definitely see us using it, obviously, at our board meetings, but even, you know, at graduation ceremonies or, um, I don't know, we can think of some other opportunities where we could use this, but, um, I, I, I personally do really like number one, and, um, it, it's certainly not a, um, rush, because I don't think there's any rush in getting this done. I want to do it right, um, and I do fully trust the process that has gone into this and appreciate that they came back to us, um, even with three different options. I wasn't expecting that, I was kind of expecting one, so. And I will mention that Paul did tell me that he likes number two, for what it's worth, but, um, so, I'll just throw that out there, since he wasn't able to be here tonight. Any other discussion, otherwise we would then put it up.
I guess I would say I appreciated too what Deon had to say about, um, that, you know, a formal land acknowledgement, if I understood her correctly, is, uh, there's not really a right way to do it, at this point, you know, it's, it's a fairly newer, um, acknowledgement or practice, um, that's happening in public meetings, and, um, so again, with that being said, I appreciate the options that, um, that the committee came up with, and, um, what, what my experience has been in, in feedback where, when, when these acknowledgements are suggested, either casually or in a formal meeting setting, the first thing everyone, you know, non-travel members say is, well, we like the idea, but we want to make sure we do it correctly. We want to make sure we're doing it right, and so, um, to acknowledge that there's not necessarily a right or wrong way, but I think it shows good faith to, to take the work that's been done, um, and, and, you know, and, and go with it, and I, um, I like the first one again because, you know, uh, most people, I can speak for most people, but it seems the, the vibe I get is people just want to show, they want to show respect and gratitude, um, to, uh, you know, the indigenous people who have lived here for, for so long, and I feel like the first one really, um, captures that, um, and, uh, so that's why, you know, I, I like it, I like the, like the sentiment of it, um, and, because I think that's what we as a, a board, uh, want to do, and as a district, is to show that respect and, and acknowledge of what has come before, and that it's a valuable, uh, source of, um, history and information that can benefit all of us, so that's, uh, that's where my thoughts are on number one.
Comments, or? I think the only other comment I'll throw out there, not to throw a wrench in the works, but, um, you know, just because we do adopt one doesn't mean that that's the one we're stuck with forever and ever and ever, you know, and if it's years or whatever go by and for whatever reason, you know, um, we work with STA and it's determined that maybe we change the language, that's always an option. Everyone know we're not locked into it, so. Um, any other comments then? Right, so we will be taking a vote, um, the motion on the table is to approve Klinkit Land Acknowledgement Number One as presented. Um, because there is no, um, financial component, we, um, on vol call vote, whatever that's called, so is there anyone opposed to the motion? In favor? Do this very often. Aye, aye. All right, so motion passes. Um, and then just like I said, one thing I guess I- now we're just in a discussion, um, portion of this, but, um, you know, starting at our next meeting, we will read this at the beginning of all of our school board meetings. Um, graduation ceremonies, I think would be a very appropriate time. Um, I- I'll defer to you.
Yeah, I think, um, I- I think it would be great to read the land acknowledgement, really any, uh, large gathering celebration that we have, um, I could see it being, um, read before, uh, open houses, um, you know, assemblies and obviously school board meetings, graduations. But anytime, uh, promotion ceremonies, we bring, um, students' families together to celebrate, um, you know, some of the great things that happen in our schools. I think this would be an appropriate, um, you know, uh, recognition and acknowledgement to have, um, kind of, uh, leading into really our- our ceremonies that we, you know, come together to, uh, celebrate.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you, guys. Um.
Amy. Amy, can I?
So, oh.
Can I just suggest that for the purpose of the recording and for those online, that we read what number one says?
Absolutely, yes. And it is part of the board packet, so I apologize. I didn't mean to reference that. Um, but yes, so the- the motion that was, or the, um, the land acknowledgement that was just, um, accepted is the Sika School Board acknowledges that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Klinkit people who have lived in Shidka since time immemorial. We express our- sorry, we express our deepest respect and gratitude for indigenous neighbors, the Klinkit, for their enduring care and protection of Klinkit Ani. I apologize if I butchered any words. Um, all right. Um, so item eleven B is just discussion of the flag salute in Klinkit. This isn't a motion, um, and really just what I wanted to discuss on this one is, um, STA did provide us with a written copy and, you know, I should've- I suppose you can put that up on there. It's attached to our, um, if you can, it's fine, don't worry about it. Um, but they provided us with a written copy of the flag salute in Klinkit along with a, um, verbal audio recording of it. Um, and I just wanted to discuss as a board, you know, um, I guess the options of what, how we, you know, may want to use that, um, so.
Well, not to jump in, um, but first and foremost, I just want to commend our board and all of, um, you know, personally, um, being a part of this board, um, since I've been elected, um, I've just been, um, delighted with the fact that everyone comes to the table with an open mind. And, um, for some people, um, cultural awareness can be a touchy subject. Um, but it, um, I was reminded, um, today going through these resolutions, so many of our resolutions, um, AASB resolutions within the state, um, touch on, um, being culturally aware and attentive, um, and harboring that, um, ability to acknowledge and promote, um, cultural identity. And the ability to promote cultural identity within our tribal families within the state has actually shown, um, you know, better test scores and happier children and more successful children. So, um, you know, to tie it in with, um, what we have done within these, um, last few months, um, with the name change and with, um, the land acknowledgement and with, um, this current discussion of, um, with the flag salute in Klinkit, um, you know, whatever we decide, it's light years ahead of a lot of districts within the state. And it just goes to show how much, um, um, the Sika School District, um, cares about our tribal families and that, um, that's going to really help our, um, our school district as a whole. So, and our numbers and test scores and everything, so, thank you. And I'm open to, um, the flag salute being played. And I'm horrible at languages, but I'm excited, um, that it was provided in Klinkit and I, you know, I have Klinkit children and, um, definitely will look at it and try to learn it without butchering it.
Yeah, I was, uh, reading through and, yeah, I wouldn't, uh, it would be- it wouldn't sound very good if I tried to properly pronounce this without some good guidance. But, and I, Blossom, I- I definitely, uh, hear what you're saying too, you know, we, with our district and our community and I- I tend to work, or I have historically worked in an envi- in an environment where, um, uh, good, bad or different, I- I can hear some of the strong opposition or other sides of things. And, uh, you don't have to listen too far where you- where you start getting some of that, uh, I would call feedback about, you know, us or as a country acknowledging or recognizing both the, uh, our- the indigenous cultures that were here before European, but also just the profound melting pot that this country is. And, uh, it's- it's interesting to me that, and I might be a minority, but I- I- I look at that diversity of culture in our country and people being able to get along is, uh, a significant bonus. I- I- but I- it's always rather confusing to me when, uh, when I hear such strong opposition, uh, for somebody if they're not of a certain whatever, you know, fill in the blank. And, uh, um, in reality, we're- we're all in this together. We're all brothers and sisters and, you know, we- we, uh, just need- we need to keep moving forward. And as far as the Pledge of Allegiance, I- I think, um, whether a person is, uh, from an indigenous background in North America, whether they're from Asia or, uh, Hispanic or, uh, whatever, uh, whatever language somebody happens to know or is their first language and they're living in our country, personally, I have no objection if they say the Pledge of Allegiance, you know, to our country in their language. It just- it's- that's fine. It shouldn't- it's not a big deal. Um, they're- they're citizens of our country or they're people of our country. Um, I- so personally, I- I- I think this is, uh, this is perfectly fine and I think it would be great if, uh, in a classroom, you heard some students, uh, saying this and also Ilukano and Tagalog and Spanish and- and other languages. What's- what's wrong with that? You know, 'cause it's- it's- it's all saying the same thing. So, um, I think it's, you know, I was looking at this was, uh, quite some time ago that this was written out and, uh, I think it would be, personally, I think it's perfectly fine if students wish to, uh, regardless of their ethnicity, if they wish to learn this and- and say it during that time.
But also within the discussion of, um, the Pledge of Allegiance, um, being recited, um, during the Sika's board meeting, um, I think, um, it would show good faith that we would decide when would be a good time. We definitely have the materials and the know-how to- to ceremonially, um, accept this and promote, um, the Klinkit language and also the, um, cultural, um, highs in which we live. Um, so I think it would be in our best interest if we decided, um, when we should play this, not if. And, um, I would think, um, Alaska Day, October, um, for ceremonial reasons and also maybe Elizabeth Pradavich and also Indigenous Peoples' Day. That's- that would be my discussion or my suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, I agreed with- with all that's been said. Um, at risk of sounding ignorant, what- what are we discuss- are we gonna- are we gonna formally adopt this at some point? Or is it- and is that what we're discussing, like when and where it would be used?
So, and maybe I- I probably should have maybe explained this a little bit better. I mean, we have the opportunity to adopt it and say, we wanna say it at the beginning of our school board meetings or say it at certain times or say it in our classrooms or, you know, um, we can also though, do kind of what we've done with the, um, Klinkit Land Acknowledgement and the Bear Enough Elementary renaming and- and give it to STA and say, what, you know, what do you think? What would be appropriate? How should- I mean, we- you- we kinda can do anything. So, um, and I would maybe lean that direction. That's been a successful, um, partnership, um, items that we've passed on to them. Um, so, yeah, we have it and now we have to just decide what we want to do with it or did. I'll just say too, um, you know, like one idea I had, other than maybe, you know, just passing it on to the Cultural Resource Committee, um, is, you know, I don't wanna be disrespectful and be the one that's reciting this and saying it at school board meetings and butcher it, like you said. So, you know, one thought I had was inviting someone from STA or an elder to come, you know, and maybe not every single meeting, but whenever they're available and they could come and lead us in it or we could- we have the recording, you know, just, um, um, you know, I don't know. We have a lot of different options, but that was one thought that I had, um, 'cause I, that'd be actually really cool, I think. So, um, what?
Um, I think- I think, um, getting the, uh, the- the tribe's input on what they think would be appropriate, uh, would be a- a good move and would be informative for us. Um, and also just for on the record, I know it's on the- the board, but it, you know, thank you to Pauline Duncan and Al Duncan and Robbie Littlefield for getting the work needed to put this paper in our hands, um, and having those- the words written out. Um, I think just like with the land acknowledgement, you know, the intention is to show respect and gratitude and acknowledgement of what- what has come before and what is still here. Um, so, you know, I- I would be, if it just became a thing that we did, um, you know, I'd like to see a little more intention behind that, um, with- with this specifically. So, um, so, yeah, it's great that we have this to- to build off of and, um, I like your suggestions, Blossom, about, you know, around certain events, you know, the month of October or Indigenous Peoples' Day, Alaska Day, um, whatever- whatever is appropriate, which again, I would ask for feedback and input on, uh, to help us make that decision.
One thing I was noting is that Robbie Littlefield's name was on this for putting this together in nineteen ninety-six, which was twenty-five years ago and we just gave a twenty-five year acknowledgement to her, so it was kinda cool. Um, well, what do you guys think about, um, and I could ask Paul, you know, since he, um, I think he participates in a lot of the Cultural Resource Committee meetings, um, asking him to take this to them and- and get their feedback on it?
Yeah, I'd be interested in- to know. I know I only just have one more meeting, um, uh, like I said just when I spoke a few minutes ago, I- I, when I read this or saw that on the agenda, I just had the- the assumption that, uh, um, you know, it was- it was, to me, it was nice to see, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance broken down into the- the Klinkit language. Um, as far as how it was to be used or when it was to be used, I kind of envisioned it as- as like an optional type situation. More, I was thinking more like the students, um, I certainly not opposed to board meetings and things like that. Um, I just, and I haven't mentioned this in a number of years, uh, this is the newer board, but, and I fully, fully support all this and I don't want anybody to take what I'm saying wrong. But also at the same time, I wanna make sure that along with our indigenous population, we do have other cultural minorities in our community, um, uh, very, very large Filipino, Hispanic and others, you know? And I just, I- I just, I view our public schools as, you know, it- it's open for everybody and I- I kind of, I view the Pledge of Allegiance, I have no oppo- opposition at all during special, uh, uh, recognition to, uh, indigenous cultures and events that are taking place that we have dates for and stuff. But it's just a kind of a, as a general pledge of allegiance, uh, all of our students have the option to, uh, either say it or not say it, you know, that's something on our district. Um, and again, like I said originally, I- I don't want this to get too complicated. I think my thought is whether, irregardless of a person's cultural background, if they would like to learn this and recite that during the classroom, when they stand up or at- at, you know, our meeting now, uh, that's great. Uh, if I were to wanna learn the, uh, um, Ilukano version of this, uh, you know, do the same thing. I just, I kinda, that's where I'd be kinda curious or wanna maybe touch base with the tribe is, you know, where- where do they see, uh, this being utilized? And I- I would just like it to be personally, my own input, I'm just one board member, uh, just open, you know? Not put too many restrictions, not too much, 'cause, um, we, I don't know. I just- I just wanna, uh, I wanna be fair to all, every- everybody. And, uh, this is very nice to have. It would be, I would be thrilled if at our next meetings, somebody from the Filipino community submitted, you know? I don't know, I just- I just like options. We have a rich culture here and I think when it comes time to pledge allegiance to the country, um, you pick the language that fits ya and, uh, and go with it, because it all means the same, so.
Eric, thank you for your discussion tonight. I think we've all voiced our opinions, um, very well and I hear what you say. Um, and, um, just to give a little bit of background as to why it's showing up in the packet tonight, I think it's, um, way back, um, I think in December, when I reached out to a number of different people within the community, I definitely, um, support and, um, encourage, um, everyone to be culturally aware of their, um, ties of who they are. And I am definitely aware that Sika is a, um, place where there are many different cultures that live within our city and that's part of why our city is amazing. Um, and so to give some background, um, as a board member, I have reached out to our, um, Filipino community and our Hispanic community and I actually wrote, um, down a number of different, um, groups, um, within our city that I am aware of. So, I think, you know, I agree with you in how we should harbor all of those cultures within our city. Um, I do want to point out that having the Klinkit, um, Pledge of Allegiance, um, either recited or stated or spoken, I highly encourage our students to learn it. Um, and, you know, when it comes to fairness or being, um, a board that may not want to put, um, obstacles where obstacles, um, shouldn't be, um, tonight, I think it was stated, we don't wanna make things complicated. But complications, um, you know, I just want to define complications and not have that, um, be, um, mixed up with just hard work. And, um, you know, we are on Klinkit Ani. We do have, um, you know, the, you know, the, what is it? I hate to use that term, so I never use it, the, um, what is it? The gap, the achievement gap. We do have the achievement gap to look at and a lot of our traditional families have a history of education being a barrier, historical trauma. And so, a lot of, um, our resolutions that- education being a barrier, historical trauma. And so, a lot of, um, our resolutions that we're about to discuss tonight, um, discuss the importance of being culturally aware and also being culturally, um, connected and also harboring that connection. And I don't think that it's any ill will or favoritism or any type of, um, one-handed gesture to promote, um, the, the Pledge of Allegiance, um, being said in Klinkit at, um, I fully suggest, um, and support this, um, decision going to the Cultural Committee, um, just so that we can, um, figure out when would be a good time. I definitely support, um, this being posted within our school so that it can be seen. Um, and I am with you, Eric. I think any child who knows, um, the Pledge of Allegiance in any language that they know it. I myself grew up, um, speaking it in Ipeack. Um, and with that being said, a lot of our, um, if not all of our indigenous languages within the state of Alaska, um, have been, um, deteriorating because of the lack of knowledge. And I think as the Sika, um, school district moves on, um, I think it would be within our best interest to harbor any type of education, um, of, um, this language. And, you know, I don't wanna stop it at the Pledge of Allegiance, um, you know, and I'm very proud that we do have Robbie Li- Littlefield and her work that she does. Um, but, you know, we could do our part and figure out, um, when we can say this, and, uh, I don't think it's favoritism at all. It's just, um, giving the rightful respect to the, um, traditional people in which the land we live on in our school district is on. Thank you.
Somebody's gotta take up the slack, Marley.
Yeah, there, I feel like maybe the consensus is to pass this on to the Cultural Resource Committee. Does that, alright, I will ask Paul, um, alright, thanks you guys. Um, that brings us to our last piece of business. Does anyone need a break? I don't foresee this taking more than maybe fifteen, twenty minutes, but, good? Okay. Okay, alright. So, um, if we can get a motion for the AASB res-
I move to approve the AASB twenty twenty-one resolutions as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the AASB twenty twenty-one resolutions as presented. Is there any public comment? Alright, um, moving on to board comments. So, I'll just remind everybody, um, so, AASB asked us to get these, um, just any input that we have from our school district on these resolutions, um, I think they wanted them by October fifth, and then, you know, these are what they use in lobbying and, um, stuff with legislator, legislators, um, there were the five different categories. And so, we'll just start with, um, governance, which is Eric, we kinda broke them out so that we all didn't have to look through every single one, um, and mostly I, mostly identifying the ones that are sunsetting and whether, um, AASB put their suggestions as to whether, you know, they thought it should be renewed or not. So, just really anything that, um, the only, we're, what the motion is right now is to go with their recommendations. If we decide to change anything, then there'll have to be a subsequent motion from. So, Eric, do you wanna take, take it?
Yeah, before I start, when I, um, just a little pro tip for those in the future, I, I clicked on the link that was provided on the board packet and, uh, I made the fatal error of not looking at the pages, which is a hundred and sixty-two pages, and I hit print. And, uh, I was wondering what was, 'cause I only wanted to get like a couple of pages of what it pertained, but I forgot to put the parameters in. And we have a very old printer that you'd like, have to physically shut it down, set it outside, and run over it before it stops, um, but I, I have a lot of re- pa- paper I can recycle. I did get it to stop at about eighty, but, uh, I digress, sorry. But I had government, governance, and, uh, there was only one, uh, resolution that was sunsetting. It was one point eight, which is compulsory attendance age, and, uh, this was recommended for renewal, um, and basically, I'll just, uh, what it says is, um, it, it basically changed when this was adopted in two thousand one, compulsory age of attend, school attendance had been age seven to sixteen, and it was changed with this to age, uh, ages six through eighteen. And the rationale was, uh, state and local performance standards set high expectations in mathematics, reading and writing for children age five through seven. Furthermore, research indicates that earlier education is beneficial. In fact, most children in Alaska are enrolled, are enrolled by age, age six. Most seven-year-old kids are in first or second grade with a renewal emphasis on reading and writing and mathematics skills. In the next few years, skills on which the child will be assessed, children starting school late are at a big advantage. Then it con- then it concludes, uh, sixteen-year-olds are not ready to make the enormous decisions to give up high school education. Increasing the mandatory age to eighteen helps ensure that students who have not yet graduated from high school and are too young to make the life-changing decisions to forego basic education will stay in school and have more opportunities to meet performance standards. Mandatory attendance laws must be enforced, but the best way to keep students in school is to fund and provide education programs that engage students. So, that's just, um, you know, it, it made sense, and again, this is in two thousand one, it's been re- renewed several times, and, uh, uh, my suggestion are, uh, is that, that we, uh, support the renewal of this one.
If anyone has any questions, comments, or anything, just jump right in and, um, yeah, that was your only one, so, alright. You ready to move on, or anyone have any thoughts on that? So then, um, Paul had funding, um, and I just have to say, I took personnel, and I did not realize when I took personnel that there were none for personnel. So, I got home and I was like, sweet! And then Paul texted me today and he said, I'm not gonna make it. And I'm like, oh, no. So then I had to do it. Thanks, Paul. Um, so, um, funding has, oh, six or seven of them, um, I did not print them all out. Um, the first one is two point three, Secure Rural Schools, and it's just basically saying, AASB urges permanent reauthorization of secure rural schools, um, 'cause right now it is a up in the air every year. It's not, bless you. It's not permanent, and we never know, and we usually find out we're getting it for the prior year, like a year later, so, um, I don't, I obviously would support this, and that was AASB's re- um, recommendation to us, to renew it. Next one is two point nine. Local contribution in the school funding formula, um, basically, well, all it is, is AASB supports retaining in the school funding formula the local option of establishing a local contribution based on a forty-five percent of basic need for borough and municipal school districts. Um, I don't know the history on this one or where the forty-five percent came from, but I would say that this is probably, you know, they suggest to renew it, so I, I don't know why I'm against that, but, um, I think it's more than forty-five percent, but, but we'll stick with that. Um, next one, two point one five. Um, funding for school district-operated regional boarding home programs. Um, AASB supports providing adequate funding for locally controlled and operated regional boarding high schools throughout the state. Um, my understanding is that Mount Edgemont School, and, and then the rationale, it does mention Mount Edgemont. I believe that is the only one, but I think this came about because they were at full capacity, so they were, um, for other facilities. I agree with that one. Um, two point two one. Reliable and efficient service by the Alaska Marine Highway System. Yes, yes, yes. Um, AASB urges the state of Alaska to provide or subsidize frequent, reliable, equitable, and efficient ferry service to all of southeast, southeast, southwest, and south central communities. Um, obviously still support this and wanna renew it. Um, I almost do feel like at some point in time, the conversation has to change because you can't support a system that pretty much does not exist anymore, um, and sadly, that's kind of where we're heading. But, um, you know, for, I guess for the time being, I don't have anything better to recommend other than, um, you know, I, I, yeah, I, I'm digressing. Sorry, Eric, now I'm, you're rubbing off on me, but, you know, I almost feel like if the state's not gonna fund that and say that it's too expensive, it'd be nice to have an alternate way of the state funding travel expenses for school districts, you know, in these remote communities, um, if that's, if it's not gonna be through the ferry system. So, um, I'm just thinking about, I guess, and solutions. Um, two point two two. Bypass mail in Alaska. I don't know anything about this, and I don't know if anybody else does. Um, it, it's a rural, there's a program called bypass mail program. I, I don't know what that is, and I, sorry, I just had today to look at this. I didn't have time to research it. Um, something that obviously would affect rural, um, school districts, and so I, again, wouldn't see any reason not to support it, um, but I just don't have any knowledge about this. On two point two three is my last one, and that's funding for schools by establishing the base student allocation in advance. Um, this is something that I think gets talked about pretty much every year. AASB does recommend renewing this one. Um, at this point in time, we typically find out in the fall what the gover- governor or legislative body, you know, wants to do for funding. Um, it's certainly not in advance, um, so, um, this would be great if we knew a year or two ahead of time what to expect for the BSA. And Paul just asked that I make the, um, just the comment that, you know, we have been flat funded for, you might know better than I do, seven, eight, there are more than that.
It's been, it's been some time, yeah.
Um, which flat funding really does mean reduced funding, because when you factor in inflation, it's just less and less and less every year. So, um, not that that's exactly part of the BSA, but if we could, if we could get a guarantee of it a year or two in advance and it actually increased, that would be fantastic. Definitely support them renewing this one. Is there thoughts of her?
Um, just to, not to take too much time. I know it's been a, quite an evening, but just to, um, touch base on the rural mail, um, yeah, it needs to be supported. Someone, um, who has lived in, um, Bush, Alaska, um, and someone who lives here now, I definitely, this is part of the reason why, I hope my husband's watching this. This is part of the reason why I check the mail every day, because it's, um, it is a, something that we take for granted here. And, um, you know, as much as we feel, uh, about the ferry system, the mail system, um, in rural Alaska, definitely needs to be supported. Um, my son, who goes to school in Galena, he did not get any of his boxes, um, that was supposed to be sent home because of the lack of rural mail support, um, and so, um, he went for a good part of the summer with about five pairs of clothes. Um, and, uh, so, yeah, yeah, it just needs to be supported, and I hope it, I hope it does.
Um, and that moves on to you, Blossom, for child advocacy.
Let's see, so I only had two, and I had it pulled up here. Uh, now I can't find it. Okay. So, um, the first one is three point one three, in support of the Alaska Children's Trust. Um, you know, I've, we've, I think this is our second time go around. It is, and I picked child advocacy the last time. Um, it's just so hard to say, no, I'm not against, it's child advocacy. It's really easy to say, um, I fully support this, um, and there's no reason, um, why we shouldn't. Did you want me to discuss, fully discuss the three point one three?
Um, I guess it's up to you, like whatever, you know, a, a brief explanation of what it is, and, yeah.
Yep. And so, three point one three is, um, support of the Alaska Children's Trust, um, it says, AASB fully supports the work of the Alaska Children's Trust and urges all member school boards to promote the trust in efforts to address the tragic consequences of abuse, neglect, violence, and crime experienced by too many of Alaska's children. AASB urges the legislature to support and increase the Children's Trust endowment. And I think that just speaks for itself, and, um, I feel, I didn't see any language that needed to be, um, changed, and, um, that, um.
My only comment on that one is in light of COVID, I think that's more important than ever, you know, but, yeah, yeah.
Definitely. Um, and then, the next one I had was, um, three point one six. Um, revised parental permission requirements for questionnaires and surveys administered in public schools. And so, three point one six. Um, you know, in light of this, I've, you know, I know what, the, how much information and how much schools rely on, um, gathering information. And, um, again, just to touch lightly, it states, um, AASB supports modifying the requirements for parental or legal guardian permission for a student to participate in a questionnaire or survey administered in a public school to make it easier for school districts to obtain the necessary permission. Um, and so, you know, it's important for families to have their say and to say whether or not they want their child to be questioned. Um, and I, I don't have any other, um, words of wisdom on that. I support it. Um, I want our families to have a say in what the child is asked or whatnot. Um, I did go ahead and read through the whole child advocacy, and while it may not be on the grid that we're discussing, um, just briefly, again, and I found within the resolutions, um, when, when they discuss, uh, Alaska Native families or, um, tribal involvement, they just kinda jump around with indigenous and also Alaska Native. Their wording is, isn't really, um, great, consistent. That's the way, thank you. Um, so, that's all I have to say. I'd love for the resolutions, while it may not be the two that I have, to, you know, AASB to look through and find a consistent, um, line of words, vocabulary.
So my comment, oh, were you gonna say something?
And hopefully, uh, with regrets, I, you know, I, you know, hopefully it'll work out that you can go to that boardmanship, uh, up there in Anchorage, and, uh, that is a very, very, uh, good experience. I think I, of the six years, I only was able to make it to two of them, I think, or, and, uh, with regrets, but that would be, um, what you're, what you're speaking to, that would be a perfect opportunity to bring that up, because, uh, it'll, it'll be a very good audience to, to, to discuss that, so.
Well, and my comment on that was, um, just to kinda put it in perspective, it's almost like our board- it's almost like our board policies and every time you wanna change a language, it has to get approved at the board table by, for each and every single one and that's how these get changed. It's, um, it's really quite the process. It's pretty fascinating because each school district gets so many votes and that you're in a room with hundreds of people and they're making motions and they're making amendments to the motion and they're passing and they're, you know, um, so every single one would have to be polled and voted on, you know, which could happen and we as a city school district should make that recommendation and say, and point out every single one and go through every single one and, and, you know, propose that they change that. So, if you wanna take that on for next year, (laugh) um, I highly recommend it. It would be quite the undertaking, but, um, it's also been brought up at, at the conferences, too, um, that it needs to be consistent, um, so, yeah. But just so you understand why it, it has to, they all have to be individually approved, so. Um, all right, which our next one, pers- oh, personnel, which is me, which is none. So, um, and I didn't see any outside of this, um, that I would recommend any change. Um, and that leaves us with Andrew for education programs.
Yeah, um, so there were four resolutions that were set for sun setting and, uh, all have been recommended to be renewed. Uh, five point one four is urging the legislature to recognize the true and improving rate of Alaska high school graduation, uh, which is just saying that the graduation rate has been steadily improving since two thousand five and urging the legislature to acknowledge that.
They actually, AASB had no recommendation on that one, which I thought was interesting.
Oh, was there no? I'm sorry, I missed it.
So I, no, no, that's okay. Um, I just thought that was really interesting, um.
Oh, yeah, you're right, no recommendation.
So I don't know what that means, like, if we, you know, I guess we could just go along with that and have no recommendation or we could, um, let them know that we have a recommendation one way or another.
Well, I thought it was kind of a interesting resolution, um, because if there was a history, which, um, I didn't do my research to see if there was a pattern of the legislature not acknowledging improvements in schools and using that as somehow negatively, I don't know. So, um, you're right, I missed that, there is no recommendation. And I, I don't feel, open it up to you all, like, what, I, I think it's, the results speak for themselves and AASB, of course, is going to be one of the biggest advocates for schools and funding when it comes to showing improvements in, in, uh, the activities that are going on. So, I, I don't feel, I, like I said, it seems kind of a, a weird resolution to me to begin with, but apparently it was necessary at one point. So, I don't know, those of you, Howser, do you have any history on that or in, in sight?
I don't really have a, a lot of history on it. Um, I can speak to, um, past, my past history as a high school principal and looking at, um, graduation rates and sometimes having to go back and clarify some graduation rates, um, uh, sometimes reporting, I think, uh, in the past, speaking, uh, as a high school principal at one point, um, I have advocated for and spoken up about how a lot of times the focus is on the four-year graduation rate and in working with students, um, and a real need to recognize that there are some students that have situations that take place in their lives that require them and from medical to whatever that might be, um, to whether postpone or step away from school for a semester or for a year. And I think that, uh, the graduation rate, whether it's a four or a five-year graduation rate, should be recognized and celebrated because some students just might need a little more time to be able to graduate and it shouldn't matter that a focus tends to be on that four-year rate. It should be on the graduation rate and that has been something that I have, I've written about in the past, um, and celebrated students, it doesn't matter if it's a five-year, and I've had students that have, you know, had to take a little bit longer than that, too. And to me, it's about, you know, that perseverance and being able to recognize and celebrate our students that have, um, made it through and, like I said, there's a number of different reasons why it might not happen in four years and, um, supporting no matter what, uh, the students that, um, reach that graduation point and being there, whether it's four or five or however long it takes to celebrate them when that happens. And so, that would be kind of some feedback I would provide, uh, around this. Um, it does seem that there tends to be a focus on the four-year, um, though five-year is reported, uh, it seems like that four-year and I really think that graduation rates, um, need to be celebrated, uh, whenever that happens, whether it's four or five or, or later.
Okay, so, thank you for that. Um, and when there is no recommendation, then is it, is that a recommendation to let it set? Or is it just like, we shouldn't do anything? So, I should've better seen that, um.
No, no, that's fine, 'cause we can go back and, and say that, you know, we do recommend. You know, the, the way, where my brain was going with this one is, um, funding because I've heard so many times that this, at our local level, is why should we fund education without seeing (inaudible). So, that's, I was kinda thinking about that from the state level of if the legislature does recognize that if graduation rates are getting better and that the quality of education in Alaska is improving, would it maybe encourage them to provide more funding for schools? Um.
Or less.
(laugh)
You know, like, it's like you're doing well with what you've got and that's what, that, that would, I could see that backfiring because really, a, a low graduation rate, to me, would indicate a really, a need for funding. So, I, I don't know, it just seems like a, it seems like a tricky, it could easily backfire on you.
Yeah.
I don't know. Um, okay, so, but I don't think we, as the four of us, do we have any strong feelings about advocating to continue this or changing the wording? I really liked what Mr. Howser said about, uh, you know, the graduation rate period, not four years, that started in school and then graduates, doesn't matter if it was four, five, or five and a half, six years, that's still a positive, so.
And that's, and that's the rationale that was used before for, I don't know, for, well, it must've been for renewing it. Because they used twenty sixteen and that was the last time that it was amended, um.
Within four years and nearly eighty-one percent within five years.
Yeah.
You know, an extra five percent.
So, I mean, I, I would support, um, recommending to renew it.
Yeah, that's what I would, um, listening and actually reading it, uh, I, I wouldn't see how we wouldn't renew it, um, especially with the funding, uh, needs and, um, you know, just because something gets better doesn't mean that you need to stop, um, doing it.
I agree.
So, uh, you know, you know, if we're doing, um, something good, let's continue to do it and support it as, as long as, I'm always for having it in writing, so.
Okay, so, good discussion, everybody. Uh, the next one was five point two, or do we need to?
Actually, can I, can I move to amend our AASB recommendations to, to, um, recommend that we renew five point one four? Moved and seconded to recommend an amendment to the recommendation to, uh, renew education programs, five point one four. Any public comment to the motion? Board comment?
Make one other real quick possibility on some of this is, uh, I do remember in the earlier years when I was on the board that there was, it would, Alaska would get blasted or the legislators would, you know, 'cause they would look at the cost per student, you know, and, uh, how much it was costing the state, you know, legislators, Jesus, you know, they were, were, were the most expensive state in the country and we have the poorest results and on and on with, with zero thought process going into, you know, Alaska being a quarter size of the United States and extremely remote and just the laundry list is huge, the hypocrisy was incredible. But it was, it was just, it just seemed like a tool to try and, um, put all the blame on, on the, on the school system and teachers and administrators that, you know, we're not getting the results and, I don't, maybe it's not related to this, but it just, um, I, I think that, uh, you know, our, Alaska is so unique compared to everywhere else, where else in the country, with our isolated areas and, uh, diversity of cultures and, so I, I don't know. I, I, I think it's great and I didn't look closely at this, but I'm glad this discussion was had because I, I think it is something worthy of renewing, for sure.
Other comment, are we ready to vote? So, the motion on the table is to amend the AASB resolutions to recommend redoing, renewing education programs, section five point one four. Um, is there any opposition to the motion? Right, so seeing that motion passes, then, move on to reg- uh, original motion.
Okay. Um, the next resolution was five point two zero, supporting easier access to charter school programs, and this is outlining that times, um, students from lower income or, uh, so academically performing students, uh, want to get into charter schools, charter schools tend to want to target those groups of students, um, but oftentimes there's random lotteries or other more quote-unquote fair, uh, methods of getting student bodies selected and that, um, there should be, uh, more weighted systems in place. You can still do a lottery, but perhaps, um, it's a best, uh, statute change may allow districts to implement a weighted lottery for low academically performing or low-income students to serve students they feel will most benefit in a charter school. Typically, students of higher socioeconomic families apply to charter schools, so a random lottery will be highly unlikely to reach the target group of students desired. Um, so, I didn't have any, I thought that was a good one to renew. Anyone else has any thoughts on it? Uh, five point two one, is supporting the Alaska Performance Scholarship, uh, for high school students. And, uh, APS has been successful in that more of our high school students are taking a rigorous course load in order to be eligible for the scholarship and after entering college take fewer remedial or developmental coursework, according to statistics compiled by the Alaska Post Secondary Commission. Recipients of APS also accumulated credits at a faster pace than non-recipients and were nearly twice as likely to continue their college attendance, as the commission reported in twenty sixteen. So, in support for that scholarship. And then the last one is supporting CTE or Career Technical Education classes, uh, or credits for the Alaska Performance Scholarship. And that, uh, oftentimes, in the past, for considerations for that scholarship, students who had CTE credits, um, those credits weren't weighted as strongly in that student's favor, uh, than other, other academic credits. And so, um, this is just saying that CTA classes are a valuable part of the curriculum and that students who take them should not be, uh, considered as less for, uh, scholarship, the Alaska Performance Scholarship with those credits. And I completely agree and I felt based on past board conversations, we would, you all would agree as well.
Yeah, this is something that, uh, um, was just until, I think, just very, very recently, it was in jeopardy, they weren't sure if there was gonna get, those funds were gonna get released. Um, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, this is the, the Performance Scholarship, that, those are utilized, uh, only within the state of Alaska, I believe. They don't, is, can that be used, if, if an Alaska student gets that, I think it has to be used within an in-state institution?
My understanding, yes, it has to be within the UA system.
Yeah, and so, and, uh, but I know our district, uh, promotes that, uh, quite heavily and, uh, um, I can say as a parent, we're, both of our sons, there's three, three tiers that can be qualifications and, uh, we were fortunate that, um, both our sons were able to get some to hold in that and, uh, makes a difference, you know, makes a difference. It was, uh, so I'm glad to see that they're still pushing for this and, uh, um, it's a, and, and also the fact that they acknowledge that if a student wants to do a, a more of a vocational route, you know, that it's still applicable, which is great, so, um, really fully support this.
Right, and that was the last one. Uh, okay, so, I will, what I will do is, um, oh, actually, sorry, we need to take a vo- a vote on, um, we went through all of those, um, so the motion on the table is to approve the AASB, after eight o'clock, I just can't do it anymore, um, move to approve the AASB twenty twenty-one resolutions as presented with the amendment. Um, is there any objection to the motion? None, the motion passes and then I will submit that back to AASB and let them know our recommendation on that one. Um, and again, I'll just encourage you blossom if you wanna, you know, make any suggestions for next year. Every year I always think that there's a couple of things I wanna, like, put together and then it's a lot of work and I never do, um, but I, I have some high hopes for a few things maybe next, um, so, couple other things, we have our next regular school board meeting, October sixth, in this room, I believe, Eric's last meeting with us. (laugh) I'm just kidding. Um, then after that, our special school board meeting for swearing in our new, um, board members will be, it's Friday, October fifteenth, at five o'clock PM, just in the, um, district office boardroom, um, and thanks for taking the time with that 'cause I will be out of town a couple of days that week. Um, and just a reminder, um, we have our school board retreat with Timmy Tollis from AASB, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth of October, and the AASB conference, November fourth through seventh. Like Eric was saying, it's a great, great, great opportunity, um, learn a lot, um, and I don't know if you guys got the email from them, I think they just sent it out in the last, what, day, I think it was even this week, um, that in order to attend, they are requiring vaccination, proof of vaccination and masks will be required at the event. So, um, just heads up if anyone's not vaccinated and you wanna go, that's (laugh).
Will you say those dates one more time, it's the twenty-ninth and thirtieth?
Um, November fourth through seventh is AASB conference in Anchorage and October twenty-ninth and thirtieth. It's a Friday evening and, and then all day Saturday.
That's what I got, thank you.
Um, and I think we should be able to do that in our district office boardroom and we, we've been able to socially distance them before, so I think we can do that. And with that, our meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-eight PM.